Good evening, I'd like to call this Thursday, October 25th, Meeting of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors to Order. Please rise and join us for a flag salute.
All collegialities, to comply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Would the General Counsel please call the roll? President Cobb?
Here.
Director Hines?
Here.
Director Leon?
Here.
And our Vice President Bial and Director Wenskill excused?
They are.
Thank you. Item four, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions about the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item 5.1, recognition of staff, students, and community. Five, oh, I'll read 5.1. Approval of the recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Greater Tacoma Community Foundation.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Scott-Thomas, Director of the Community Partnership Office. So, good evening Superintendent Santoro, Deputy Superintendent Garcia, and our Board of Directors. It's so good to be with you here today. I am here in recognition of our October Gold Star. As you know, Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, the school district, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success and success of the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, Tacoma Public Schools recognizes that schools cannot do it alone. In recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for TPS students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by going beyond to do what's best for kids. Tacoma Public Schools and the Greater Tacoma Community Foundation are working together to provide aligned, equitable, high-quality social and emotional and academic development to elementary school students in and out of school time. The talented and passionate people from Greater Tacoma Community Foundation partnered with Tacoma Public Schools to co-design Shift II of the Whole Child Initiative that seeks to build robust expanded learning opportunities for our students. Greater Tacoma Community Foundation is building systems for participating schools and their expanded learning opportunity partners to align and share information and data to support continuous improvement, learning from each other what works well and what practices need to be strengthened. They are implementing site-based coordination to support and provide resources to expanded learning opportunity partners, improving access, removing barriers, aligning current services, and building program quality. This framework focuses on meeting the needs of every child academically, socially, and emotionally. GTCF is helping elementary school children in Tacoma to develop positive social and emotional skills such as self-control, persistence, teamwork, and goal-setting, which are linked to success in school, career, and life. Staff who interact with students on the school bus, in hallways, in classrooms, and expanded learning opportunities will model and support the same social and emotional practices. In all of their work, the staff at GTCF are champions for equity and work tirelessly to ensure a better future for our students. We wish to share our heartfelt gratitude and respect to Kathy Littman, the President and CEO, for her visionary collaboration; Gina Anstey, the Vice President of Grants and Initiatives for her captaining this partnership with strategic and passionate leadership; Casey Nguyen, the Director of Initiatives for expertly developing systems that are sustainable and equitable; and to Farin Johnson, Program Manager of Expanded Learning Opportunities for bringing the system to life through the power of relationships. They're here, and we want to congratulate them and honor them with the Gold Star Community Partner Award.
Good evening, I am Gina Anstey, and on behalf of the Greater Tacoma Community Foundation, we are so honored and proud to accept this award tonight. It has been a long journey and a journey that is not over. Working hard to serve a community, to be the advocates for whole children, takes dedication, effort, and time, and good partners. And we have had a tremendous partnership with the Tacoma Public Schools. So, thank you again for the recognition, Amanda. Thank you for everything that you said. It is so flattering, but our work isn't yet done. Thank you.
I want to thank the folks at the Greater Tacoma Community Foundation again for all that you're doing. It's nice to have these great partners who you also work with so much that they really become friends, so it's good to see you, and thank you. Item number six, the Superintendent's Report on Planning and Construction Update.
I'd ask Mr. Aldridge to come and give us an update on where we are with our building and construction.
Thank you. I'd like to appreciate and thank the Board for allowing us to do a brief presentation today on our capital bond program. Currently, right now, we have six projects in various stages. Two, right off the bat, are nearing completion, Brown's Point and Mary Lyons. And one of the things that we see with our multi-story buildings, there at the end, the elevators are always a piece that tend to either go, they go the way they should or they slow us down a little bit. Right now, with Brown's Point, which we hope to open in December, we've had our first elevator inspection without a hitch. We've got one more from the state in two weeks. If that goes off, we have no roadblocks on that particular project. Mary Lyons is about a month behind at this point. We've got a few things there that we need to try and hopefully catch up on over the next month and a half, but we would like to open that campus up in January. If we have any roadblocks there, then we would make sure that we keep the Board informed as far as where we're at. But right now, we anticipate that that would be a January opening. Under construction, we have Grant Elementary. That one started about three months ago. If you've driven past that site, you realize the foundation. Most of that is done, and it is slowly starting to come up out of the ground. I know the community's been very excited about that one tonight. Later on, we'll also have the final GMP for that, so you'll know what that total cost is of that project as well. And in design, we've got Bernie. And one of the things I want to make sure I mention about Bernie, Bernie started on the same track as Grant. We had some issues in getting the contractor under contract, which took a little longer. And with escalation and those things that are sitting out there right now that are really having major effects, that project is a little behind. We did have to do a little redesign within that to try and keep it as close to the budget as possible. But we hope to go out for bid in January and get started on construction and that in May. And in design, we have Bose and Hunt. Bose being the first design-build project for a public school in the state of Washington. We'll bring a guaranteed maximum price for that. And the significance there is that when we, thank you. When we go out with a design-build project, once we have our GMP in place, that price stays the same. There are no change orders on the contractor's side that would increase our costs. Now, if they, during this process, we find that, let's say, there is an oil tank or something in the ground, the soil is still ours. Those are things that could cause a change order on the owner's side. Or if we see something that maybe we'd want to enhance the project down the road that we'd like to ask, those are things that we can do a change order on. The contractor can't do any change orders. So, our price is locked in. That price would not change unless we initiate a change order on that. And yesterday, we had our first executive team meeting for the design of Hunt. So, that project is in its infancy. And within the next six to eight months, we would also have a GMP for that particular project. Any questions on any of those before I go to the next slide?
I don't think so, you can keep moving.
Okay. After that, on here on this slide, we've got where our current projects sit from a budget standpoint, looking at what the actual projected, actual or projected costs are, along with our cost per square foot. We've got from Brown's Point down through Bose. And you can see, one of the things that we've been trying to do is make sure that we control our cost per square foot, which is, again, one of the reasons that we went to design-build. Penn State University and the studies that they've done show that our cost per square foot, our cost for the project in general will be about four, four and a half to five percent less than what you would see with the GCCM, or six to seven percent with a design-bid build or with the low-bid project. Right now, we're still getting the same materials. We're controlling all those things that are going in, so we know that the quality that's going into these buildings are the same. But we do want to focus on controlling our cost as we move forward. And then after that, we've just got some pictures there of both Mary Lyons and Brown's Point on the exterior there. Bose, and I believe you've got some of the information on Bose in the executive summary that you received about a month ago. And if you have any additional questions?
Director Hines?
Thank you for the report. A couple of questions. Escalation costs, I know a few months ago, given all of the construction in the Seattle area, escalation was out of control. Is that starting to stabilize?
No, sir, it's not. It is as high now as it was six months ago. As we start looking at projects within the future, most of the experts are telling us that we've got another year or two before we see some stabilizing off of that and maybe some decline afterwards. But it's really going to depend on what the market is. Right now, as growth, as construction starts to pick up here in Tacoma, and you look around the city with the number of cranes in the air, it's not easing up for us here in Tacoma.
So, if escalation is expected to continue to be increasing, does it make sense for us? How will that impact our decision to go out for another capital bond? I know that Downing is not being built this cycle. There are a number of other schools in the inventory through our capital improvement plan that need to be improved. We are in a position that I was concerned we were going to be in. When you get $500 million, you feel like you've got all of the money that you need. And when you get to the last few projects and you don't have it, you want to assure that those projects that went first are reflected in the projects that go last.
Right.
That some sort of an order that was set for construction doesn't deprive students of having similar learning spaces and opportunities. So, what sort of guidance would you give us on thinking about capital project in the future?
What we're trying to do with what we present to the Board, when we're looking at future capital projects, is make sure that we build a model, which we have, to show what the cost escalation would be for a project that is one year out, two years, three, all the way out to five years. So, when we present these various projects with you, we'll be able to show you what we believe the escalation impact would be and why a project that may be exactly the same will cost us more three years down the road. Those models, right now, we've got a couple of different folks that are looking at those numbers for us to see how accurate they possibly would be, because obviously, there's no way to tell exactly. But we are trying to build an escalation model that mirrors what we think will happen over the next five years.
Okay, that would be helpful. My last comment on Slide three. If we could have a column in there that shows the spend-down.
Okay.
We've seen presentations in the past that gives us a sense of where we are with the $550 million and as we've spent it down. And I know the purpose of tonight's presentation was to show us just these projects that are coming online. But to have that historical, I think, would be helpful. So, all 14 projects, so you can see, oh, this actual or projected cost, because there is some discrepancy
Correct.
to escalation. And I also think the way we've managed the early projects compared to where we are now, I think we're being much more fiscally responsible, and we're looking for cost efficiencies in different ways. And I appreciate your leadership and Chris's leadership on this. But to have that column in there, I think, would be helpful for context of all of the 14 projects.
Yes, and we have those numbers, and we can get those out to you as soon as possible.
That would be great, thank you.
Director Leon, any questions?
Do you expect all the future building projects to be this similar first design or a design-build, so there'd be a cap on the total cost for all future ones also?
For all of our new projects, that is the delivery method that we would like to go with. If we're doing a remodel, it's not a good method to go with, because you're, when you start opening up walls, you never know what's going to be back there, so you really can't do it with those. But for all new construction, we would like to be able to do design-build.
Well, I just have a comment. I just appreciate, I'll echo Director Hines's comments. I appreciate your and Chris's leadership. And you mentioned in your presentation of Slide three that you're striving to ensure the consistency and the quality across all these projects. I think that's a value that we all have, so we appreciate, I appreciate you and Chris and the leadership team walking that out. So, thank you. No further questions? We will move on to item number seven. Members of the public wishing to address the Board. Thank you for the presentation, I didn't say that. Thank you. Members of the public wishing to address the Board. School Board members encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. If you'd like to address the School Board, please follow these steps. First, complete a citizens' request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the School Board Secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The Superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the School Board. Please speak into the microphone. You'll have up to three minutes to share your comments, and you will get a warning when you have one minute left.
First speaker is Kevin Niketta from Stadium, followed by Matt Monet.
Hi, President Cobb, Director Hines, Director Leon, Superintendent Santoro, and Deputy Superintendent Garcia and Student Rep. My name is Kevin Niketta, I'm Principal at Stadium High School. I've been there for the last seven years and 25 years in the district. I know that legislative funding has put us in a financial crossroads, and it's causing us to make major decisions about programs and staffing. But I think it's important to know that we have been through tough situations as a district and as Tacoma Public Schools. And we can fight through this, and we can overcome that. It's always been because of the leadership of the Board and the vision of our Superintendent. So, I'm here just to acknowledge that, to show that we have made a lot of progress in this district. And I'm very proud of that and how we've moved. And this is something that will come, and we will fight together to overcome this. The vision, as always though, has been around students. And that's what we'll continue to fight for. And we've seen at Stadium, a growth because of our policies and procedures of over 90% graduation rate, 84% college-going rate. We've seen school choice allow our kids to develop and get into colleges and careers that really prepared to expand their passions. And so, I just want to thank the Board for all that support. At Stadium, we will continue to serve our students to the best, and we will get through this. I just wanted to acknowledge that. Proud to be at Tacoma, and we'll keep moving forward. Thank you.
Matt, excuse me, Matt, followed by Lynn Hughes?
Hello, Superintendent Santoro, members of the Board, dignitary staff, family, and community. My name is Matt Monet. I'm a Chief Custodian here at Tacoma Public Schools, and I'm also the Vice Chair for the Union that represents the custodial staff. We know it's become difficult to address the current budget deficit, so we're all forced to deal with the reality of the budget crisis and the ever-growing cost of living in this region. We realize it will be difficult to accommodate the necessary wage increases that all members of our school community deserve. We acknowledge that the budget difficulties, and just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the district for the state pass-through that equals the 3.1% increase. We understand these hard times and appreciate the district's willingness to provide the increase. We both feel that it's fair. And also, we would like to thank you for all your leadership during these difficult fiscal times. So, thank you on behalf of all custodians.
Lynn Hughes, followed by Tanya Duran.
My name is Lynn Hughes, and this is my coworker, Sharice Hayden. We're paraeducators at Reed Elementary. We're in the autism programs, 3.5 and 2.4. And I want to say thank you to the Board, Deputy Superintendent and Superintendent, for your approval of the increase. It's greatly needed, and I'm hoping that my coworkers will be able to maybe pay down their debt. Maybe not work as hard, but as far as their second job. I'm sorry, I'm not a public speaker. You're great. I'd rather deal with my autistic students than to speak, but I felt it was necessary to say thank you very much. And I hope that you will continue to support the paraeducators in the district. And I do invite you, if you've never been to, you know, to watch paraeducators work, whether it be in the autism program or Title I or the Multi-Arthro. And I know, Board, you happen to be gray, and I say thank you for doing that. But go out and see what we do, and see what may happen or may not happen. And, like I said, you may be surprised that we do a good job. And we do support our teachers and the rest of the school. And again, thank you very much. Sign language, thank you.
Thank you.
Tanya Duran, followed by Sally Perkins.
Good evening, everybody. I am here tonight to thank you for taking time later in your agenda to consider a resolution to endorse Tacoma Creates. I'm with the Children's Museum of Tacoma. I'm also the Chair of the Arts and Coalition. All the cultural directors coming together to really get behind this to make sure that your students have all of the access that they deserve and that they want to arts and culture experiences. So, again, I just want to thank you, and I'm really inspired by the conversations that we've been having with you to replicate maybe or learn from the partnership that you have with Metro Parks and the Y to make sure that children have lots of athletic opportunities or physical opportunities after school. We are so excited to see if we can't learn from that and to work with you to create something very similar to provide arts and culture for your students. So, thank you, and I'm hopeful that you will join the Metro Parks Board in their endorsement and do so tonight. Thank you.
Sally Perkins, followed by Jim Henderson.
Good evening, President Cobb and members of the Board. I'm testifying tonight on behalf of Vibrant Schools regarding Board policies. We note in the updated Board policies that the Board is now making provision for Committee of the Whole meetings in addition to the other types of meetings that you hold. The Committee of the Whole meetings, as written in the policy, will function like special board meetings with 24 hours' notice of their scheduling. We'd like to ask that the district consider setting up a text or email alert system to notify interested members of the public about board meetings and related materials. Right now, in order to know about a special meeting, for example, community members have to get on the website time and time and time again until it pops up to check to see if there is a notice. It would both support the Board's goals for transparency and for encouraging public participation to have an alert system to notify community members proactively about meetings and materials. What we're envisioning is a list that interested community members could sign up for, providing either a texting phone number or an email address. The district already has the technology to do the texting and emailing, and this list is likely to be relatively small compared to the ones that send out notices to every parent in the district. We envision that the notifications could be provided for when a board meeting is noticed, when the agenda is put on the webpage, when all of the links on the agenda are live. Sometimes, not all the attachments are ready when the agenda first goes up. It would be nice to know when all the links are live. When materials that are discussed at a board meeting but not yet on the web get posted to the web. When the video of the meeting is posted, and other items as identified, such as encouraging people to take the budget survey. The advantage of doing this is not only a more convenient way for community members to learn about meetings and materials, but it will also help foster additional participation at meetings and greater understanding of how the district reaches its decisions. While anyone can certainly watch the video of the meeting live or after the fact, being here in person offers a chance to build relationships with district staff people and Board members and other community members in a face-to-face setting. Vibrant Schools has found this opportunity very valuable to our understanding of the district's accomplishments, challenges, and decision-making processes. Vibrant Schools would be happy to explore this idea further with your legal counsel, Public Information Office, or others. We're very excited about the ways in which this could increase community participation and knowledge. Thank you for your consideration.
Jim Henderson, followed by Ann Tanishi.
Good evening, President Cobb and members of the Board. I'm here this evening as a parent of a seventh grader at Jason Lee Middle School, who has an IEP. I'm here to share with you that on or about October 11th, my son has been reporting to a library in place of an ELA class. The reason for that is because his special education teacher was moved into a position to fill a vacancy in Avid. As a result, that left him without a teacher and other students in his class without that teacher. And they currently still report to the library each day, not receiving instruction or their minutes required under the IEP. I learned of this for the first time on October 18th when I met with his former teacher, who had taken the new role. And I reached out that same afternoon to Christine Brandt to ask questions and to get clarification and to find out more. When that email wasn't responded, when I didn't receive a response from her email, I reached out to Dr. Hostetter, and he only referred me back to her, the person who wasn't responding to me. I very much appreciate Eric Hogan. He was the only person who reached out to my family to see what he could do to help. Since then, this has been a painful, frustrating process to ensure that my child gets the same education that every other student is getting. I am left with the impression that Jason Lee does not prioritize all students the same, and that they do not care about special education students when they knowingly removed a special education teacher into a different role, knowing that they would leave this gap. I come here today to share this with you in hopes that we can get to a place where I have better understanding as to why that decision was made and why my son has been out of a classroom since October 11th. I am pleased to tell you that as of 4:00 today, I was able to work out a new schedule with the building principal and staff that would put my son back into a classroom tomorrow. However, I still want to get to why this happened and why these choices were made that are having such an adverse effect on my child's learning. Thank you.
John, Mr. John Bell, just John here. John, will you follow up and make sure that you have an opportunity to get his number, so we can make sure we can follow up? Okay, thank you. Ann Tanishi, followed by Casey Nguyen, I believe.
Good evening, Director Cobb and others. I am the proud principal of Sherman Elementary School. We are a esteemed school. We cover science, tech, engineering, arts, and math through project-based learning. And we have an innovative school designation. I want to thank you for your support in the past six or seven years that have enabled our staff and families to create a learning environment for kids that is creative, demanding, and very collaborative. I am not a, well, I am a role follower by nature. That's how I was brought up. And as a result, it makes me think pretty conservatively when it comes to leading a school. But with encouragement to think broader and... But with encouragement to think broader and more forward-thinking, to be more forward-thinking, that came from my supervisors and from my families at school, but it also came from you. I appreciate the encouragement and actually the push to think bigger. And it's kind of funny, so the last week, we've had visitors. One group was 25-ish principals from South Korea, and another group was about seven or eight administrators from Lake Washington. And while I was giving them tours and talking about project-based learning and answering questions about how it can be done, sorry, I found myself thinking more and more about my own personal journey over the last six or seven years, and how that has expanded my own professional growth and my view of myself. So, thank you for that, too, although I'm sure that's not quite what you intended. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey, followed by Miriam Amder. Hi, Casey.
Hi. Good evening, all. Good evening, hello again. My name is Casey Guin. I am a director at the Greater Tacoma Community Foundation. I'm here to speak with you all about the resolution for endorsement of Tacoma Creates. As you already heard, the Greater Tacoma Community Foundation has been working in partnership with Tacoma Public Schools and many, many community partners over the past year to launch expanded learning opportunities centers in 12 of our elementary schools. What do I mean by expanded learning? I mean high-quality programming available to students both before, during, and after school, as well as in the summertime. And a part of this partnership, GTCF, along with the elementary schools that we're working in, surveyed the students and really went to them to get student voice to say, what programming would you like to experience, both before and after school? And the number one request that came back was arts programming. So, in addition to the alignment of Tacoma Creates with youth voice, which is what the community foundation is about, community voice, the goals of Tacoma Creates are also aligned with our community's whole-child focus. We all know that access to high-quality expanded learning opportunities provides safe activities for children and opportunities for them to explore, to dig deeper into their interest, and to provide extra time for learning. Currently, the expanded learning opportunities that are being provided in our schools that we're in partnership with, the community partners have brought resources, their own resources, to the table to provide these arts programming, this cultural heritage programming. So, what Tacoma Creates does, it creates a tremendous opportunity to expand both within the schools we're currently serving and across schools in Tacoma to allow for more equitable access for our students to have this type of programming. Tacoma Creates, I think, is an amazing opportunity for our community to have its voice heard. We've already heard our students asking for arts programming after school, and now we have the opportunity for adults in our community to show their voice in supporting student wants. So, again, all of this is to provide students the opportunity to continue to feel safe, healthy, challenged, engaged, and supported, both in school and out of school. Thank you.
Miriam?
Third time will be a charm for me, I guess, third time up here. So, I can't read my computer and look, so. So, hello, Board and Superintendent. I spoke here before, so, but as I remember, as a reminder, my name is Miriam Amder. I'm a special ed teacher, board-certified behavior analyst. I work with some of the most needy in the district, and in that, I teach in a TLC classroom or a therapeutic learning center. That's what it's known here in Tacoma. As I mentioned before, I could not do this without my two paraeducators that I have. So, I do want to thank you for the salary increase to the paraeducators, for sure. I'm here tonight for, I did this on my own. I just, it's because of my passion for special ed. Anybody at CAB in the Student Services Department knows that. Anybody back there is probably nodding their head. It is also that special ed in the district, they've even allowed me to have a task force for TLC, because I have a passion for trying to make sure things get done as best as possible. So, right now, my concern tonight is, as I look over the number of staffing reductions, Student Services was hit hard. We lost three people, three people that we probably need. Three positions were eliminated, and there were some departments that lost nobody. I'll just leave that department, those departments, nameless. My concerns is, I realize you won't answer me, but maybe you'll at least think about it, is that you eliminated the position of compliance in Student Services, and that actually makes money for us, and that that makes sure that we adhere to how we get our federal dollars. It is the, how we not, it is not a pick-up-a-day position, so it eliminated so drastically causes alarm for many of the special ed teachers. We have been told that budget reductions will not directly impact, but it does impact us when that happens. We do, that's the safety net IEPs, which is the cost of, two safety net IEPs is the cost of one administrator's salary. So, that's a huge concern if somebody doesn't get that done accurately, on time, on the dates. So, and to ensure high-quality IEPs, and that everything's turned in on time, I'm skipping because of the clock worried me. So, I'm just making sure, and I'm really concerned that we're, as we're making those reductions, that was all taken into account. Please, as you make those changes for decisions to Student Services, please think carefully and wisely. That's all. Thank you. Thank you.
That's the last public comment.
Thank you all for your comments. With that, we'll move on to item number eight, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions about items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item number nine, policy matters. 9.1, first reading, revision to policy 1400, meeting conduct order of, I believe that's supposed to be of business in quorum.
The Legal Department recommends that the board review the proposed revision to policy 1400 and provide feedback before a second reading.
Are there questions or comments about item? Well, do you mind doing a brief overview of the substance of the changes?
Certainly. On policy 1400, this policy provides for the four different types of meetings that may be scheduled by the Board of Directors. And as Ms. Perkins pointed out earlier, one of the policy revisions here would expand a meeting type. It would allow the board the ability to call a meeting as a whole, a committee as a whole, as one of the special meeting types. There has been expressed by the board at one of your recent retreats, the desire to have more space to engage in a more in-depth conversation, still certainly in a public forum, but be able to have the space for that. So, this would allow you to call those types of meetings.
Any questions or comments from members of the board? Seeing none, moving on to item number 9.2.
This is the first reading, a revision to policy 1220 for board officers and the duties of board members, and the Legal Department recommends that the board review the proposed revision to policy 1220 and provide feedback before a second reading. And the changes to policy 1220, this policy was last revised in 1999. The first thing that it does is allows responsibility to be delegated in the absence of the president and the vice president to the immediate past board president, so that we can have orderly board function, and it also makes some clarification around the distinction between executive session and closed session.
Any questions or comments from the board? Director Heinz?
I have a comment, and it may fit into this policy, or it may fit into a revision of the regulation and the evaluation of the board. But I think it would be worthwhile for us to say, as part of our professional development as board members, something to the effect of, within the first six months of serving on the board, you receive, and we can work with WASDA and NSBA and others for the specific type of training. When I arrived, and I think it continues to this day, the process was, oh, just go meet with Debbie, because she's been here the longest. And I think that there's value in her historical knowledge, but the other thing that I kind of lucked into was, early on in my tenure, I received the new board training through WASDA, and that was very helpful for me to understand, what is it that school board members do? What shouldn't we do? What are growth opportunities? What are ways to be more involved with WASDA and NSBA? So, having a section in either the policy or the regulation that gets to that, as well as things like Open Public Meetings Act and those sorts of things to have memorialized, I think would be very helpful, and in fairness to the onboarding of new board members.
I think that's an excellent comment, and we do have a different policy that addresses orientation, so I'll follow up with all the board members on that.
Thank you.
Director Leon, any comments?
No. Just would agree with that.
Okay. The only comment I would raise about this is just a more of a, well, it is a comment. In last year, we would have been in a position where we didn't have an immediate past president. So, I don't know how common that situation will be, but it just recently occurred with Director Ushka being elected to City Council, so I don't know if we want to address that in the policy or just wing it if that happens, but it's just a comment to raise as we consider the policy.
That's an excellent point as well, and maybe what we consider is immediate past president or alphabetical order?
It's something, and I don't know, I don't know, there's only five of us, so at some point, there's no one left, because immediate past president, pass, pass, could be one of the vice president or the president at that point. So, I don't know how far we want to go with this, but it's just a comment to raise as we move this forward.
I'll try and come up with a better recommendation for you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, moving on to item number 9.3.
At 9.3, we typically don't bring regulations forward for, on the board agenda, but based on the study session that we had last week, and Vice President Viall's hard work on this one, along with Deputy Superintendent Garcia, this regulation actually fleshes out more of the structure around the board evaluation process. And so, we wanted to bring this one forward for public review and comment as well. There are many of these items that are in the regulation are currently occurring, but they just haven't been documented. And so, it would take some of the best practices that the board has been conducting, as well as some others that the board wants to put into place, and sets out a calendar of milestones over a 12-month cycle.
Any questions or comments? Director Heinz?
One comment, and I do appreciate Vice President Viall requesting that this be brought forward publicly, and for her hard work and Deputy Superintendent Garcia's work on this. And I raised this opportunity at the last business meeting for a policy review, and that was based on an article that I read in the WASDA Journal recommending it as a best practice, and I think it makes a lot of sense. Oftentimes, we enact policy, and we are, it's well-intended, and then we never revisit it to determine, is it effective? Is it having its intended consequence? Is it creating unintended consequences? And so, as we think through, and I think it's really smart that we have moved to an evaluation process of the superintendent, where we say, your annual review is broken into nine-week review models based on evidence, similar to what we're doing with our teachers' and data days in building, and for the board to follow that same sort of assessment. And so, I'm happy that that's in this proposed regulation update. I think that there's an opportunity for inclusion of regular policy review as a placeholder, and perhaps at the beginning of the year, we can collectively come up at our retreat with what are the policies that we're interested in. To Director Cobb, and I appreciate that she is always reminding us to stop and get the community's input, and so that's a great opportunity for us to have the community say, what policies would you like for us to review? We can have that as an input, and then to be able to publicly show memorialized document where we're planning on having that process, I think would be very beneficial.
Just to add to that, in thinking about the timing for it, it might be a good time to do it at a reasonable time when we can assume the legislature will be out of session, because there are always some, not always, but there are often legal changes that trigger policy revisions. So, it might be something good to do in connection with any policy revisions that we're needing to make because of legislative changes. Or it might be too much to do it all at the same time, so we might consider that, but I think, just at any rate, that as a trigger for policy review should maybe be something that's incorporated here. Director Leon, any comment?
No.
I'll just add, I raised this question in the study session about the timing in February for the board approves of finalized school improvement plans. I'm not sure if folks had a chance to look at that in light of our change in the school improvement planning process or the continuous achievement planning process, but I'll just raise it again. It might be right, but just raising it as a question.
In essence, we will be moving in the future to those being living, breathing, public documents, and so you still have to go through a process, a formalized process, to adopt them. The thinking is, is that you would have a chance to see them and then their evolution before you approve them. If you would like to move that up, you'd probably be approving the first draft, if you will.
I don't want to move it up necessarily, I just wanted to raise a question about what the best timing is, given the new process that folks will be engaging in. And if there's some whack or some legal reason why we do it in February, that's fine, too, but I just wanted to raise it, given the changes that are happening in the process.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great, I'll incorporate the feedback before second reading.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 9.4, second reading, revision to policy 4216, advertising of unhealthy products.
The Legal Department recommends that the board adopts the proposed revision to policy 4216. And this is also our policy where the board will still be reserving the right to review issues at exigent circumstances, but generally rely on the expertise of the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board to make decisions about whether or not to grant a license that is close to a school, and instead focus on the advertising in compliance with WAC 314-52070, which sets strict rules around advertising when you're within 500 feet of a school.
Any, since we are taking action on this item, is there a motion to adopt item number 9.4?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments from members of the board? Director Heinz?
Thank you, I have a comment, and I've stated this before, and as recently as at the last business meeting when we had the first reading, that I believe that the decision to grant a liquor license rests with the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board, and that when there is any consideration within the district, that's an administrative action, so that's the superintendent and her team, not a board-level decision. Just want to make certain that this policy is reflective of that, and if it's not, well, let's start with, is it reflective of that?
It is, Director Heinz. It does not, the policy reserves the right for the district under the superintendent's direction to take action in the event that there is a situation that raises concern to a particular school.
Okay. Thank you.
Director Leon?
Yeah, so, it's extremely important to keep drugs and alcohol advertising out of kids' vision and hearing, of course, but we can't control what happens at home, but this is extremely important to help our kids stay safe. And there are, as you mentioned, those set of laws that the state has already. Just to clarify a little bit, there's a signage, and there could be a restaurant that says, you know, bar or something like that, but they can't have those signs of the types of alcohol that are there, or the types of tobacco that they sell that are visible. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. If a school is, if a premises is within 500 feet of a school, the WAC provides that there is a limit to no more than four- there is a limit to no more than four signs in the window, and it has to be signs of the, essentially, the brand. So, like a full-sale ale type of ad versus a come-on-in, happy hour, get-your-shots kind of situation, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification.
Not that I have a lot of personal, you know, expertise in these matters.
There are lots of smiles behind you. Any additional comments from the board? All those in favor of adopting item number 9.4 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Thank you. Thank you for all the overviews. Item number 10, quarterly financial update. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomaschools.org, then to About, and then to Finance. Item 11, curriculum and instruction. Item 11.1, approval of Early Childhood Education and Assistance Program, ECAP, fiscal year 1819 continuation grant.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, recommends the Board of Directors approve the 2018-19 Early Childhood Education and Assistance Program Continuation Grant in the amount of $1,182,462. Funding source, early learning.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 11.1 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item number 12, business matters. 12.1, approval of contract with Elements of Education Partners for the 2018-19 school year.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support recommends that the Board of Directors approve the Elements of Education Partners Contract, TSD-19-108, for the 2018-19 school year. Funding source, Sami soda idea building budgets.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments? All those in favor of adopting item 12.1 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item 12.2, adoption of resolution number 2051, authorizing the surplus in sale of the Rialto parking garage.
The Executive Director of Planning and Construction, on behalf of the Chief Operation Officer, recommends that the Board of Directors adopt resolution 2051 and approve the surplus in sale of the Rialto garage parking.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions about item 12.2?
I have a question.
Director Heinz?
How quickly do we think this will sell? Is this, with everything that's going on in downtown Tacoma, it seems like a viable market? Is your sense that we will have?
To be quite honest, I don't have a sense of it. I've been involved in this on the periphery, so I would hate to even weigh in on that, but I can, we can, I can definitely pass that along to Mr. Williams and have him respond to you on that.
Okay. And staff, have we had staff parking in this building for soda?
Yes, yes, sir.
And have we worked with them to make accommodations for new parking?
Yeah. We actually own a parking lot across the street, and so, we're going to move some of those, it was for the Ninth and Broadway area. We'll move 20 of them to this location. They'll be able to park here for 20 of the staff, and then they may need to buy some additional spaces or rent additional spaces in another location. We'll have to work on that still, but.
Let me say, we as a part of, we take care of that cost. We don't put it back on the individual employee.
And that's where I was going.
Oh, correct, yeah.
So, our decision to sell this parking structure where we currently have staff and teachers park, we have alternative plans, and if we need to find additional parking, we will bear the responsibility. We will not shift that on to staff.
Yeah, staff won't have to pay for their parking on this.
Thank you.
Unless they choose to park somewhere else, then we identify.
Okay.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 12.3 signify, well, item 12.2 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item 12.3, ratification of the 2018 through 2022 Collective Bargaining Agreement with the membership of the Public School Employees of Washington, Service Employees International Local, 1948.
The Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources recommends that the Board of Directors ratify the collective bargaining agreement between Tacoma School District Number 10 and the membership of the Public School Employees of Washington, Service Employees International Local, 1948, PSE.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions about the item? Director Heinz?
Thank you. What sort of process or data did we use to arrive at the 10%? How does that relate to other districts locally or around the state?
There was a compensation study that took place regarding comparators with our surrounding districts, and we arrived at that because we did make a cognizant decision under your direction to be as competitive as we possibly could be with the understanding of what our financial parameters are. So, through this financial incentive, as well as some other working conditions through the CBA, we're able to bring greater recognition and bring us to a place where we are more competitive.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of adopting item 12.3 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item 13, other business. 13.1, approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price, GMP, Amendment to the Contract Between Tacoma School District Number 10 and Coors Mill Construction Incorporated for Boz Elementary School.
The Executive Director of Planning and Construction, on behalf of the Chief Operation Officer, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the GMP Amendment, which states that the guaranteed maximum price on Boz Elementary School project and authorize the superintendent or designee to sign said GMP Amendment in the amount of $27,122,450 excluding sales tax. Funding source, capital bond, capital project bonds, as approved by the voters on February 12, 2013.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments about item 13.1? Director Heinz?
Just going back to the presentation, the projected cost for Boz was $35.3 million. Are we now, if we enter into this agreement, it's going to be $27 million?
That's the construction cost. When we look at that slide where we had the $35.3, that is the total cost of all, both the soft and hard costs.
Okay.
This is just construction cost.
So, it's $35 million to open the door and $27 million on the construction?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 13.1 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item 13.2, approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price, GMP, Amendment Number Three for the Contract Between Tacoma School District Number 10 and Coors Mill Construction for Grant Center for the Expressive Arts.
The Executive Director of Planning and Construction, on behalf of the Chief Operation Officer, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the GMP Amendment Number Three, which states that the guaranteed maximum price for the final 10 bid packages on the Grant Center for the Expressive Arts replacement project and authorize the superintendent or designee to sign said GMP Amendment Number Three in the amount of $7,603,090 excluding sales tax. Funding source, capital project bonds, as approved by the voters on February 12, 2013.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to just, if you could explain just a little background on the center and what it entails, just.
The center itself is an enhanced, is one of, and I'm using the wrong language.
Is it a remodel? Is it a remodel of an art center?
No, no, this is a, a tear-down and rebuild.
It's Grand Elementary. Official title is the Expressive Arts, Center for the Expressive Arts.
So, it's not a, it's the elementary. It's not some other center, okay.
It's a neighborhood school. So, the community would be built on the original site, and so, all of our students are over at the Hunt campus right now.
Okay.
And then, they would, this would be rebuilt.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of adopting item number 13.2 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item 13.3, approval of resolution number 2050 endorsing Tacoma Creates on the November 6, 2018 ballot.
The Executive Director of Communications recommends that the Board of Directors approve resolution number 2050 endorsing Proposition 1, also known as Tacoma Creates on the November 6, 2018 ballot.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments about the item? Director Heinz?
Yep, a comment. I am very much looking forward to supporting this. In fact, I have a Tacoma Creates sign in my yard. It's the only sign that I've chosen to place during this election cycle. And we have heard from a couple of the public speakers this evening on the value of it. And I know for my family, my wife is a classically trained cellist, my 15-year-old is following in her footsteps playing the cello. My 12-year-old, we were just at the Mason Concert, their fall Halloween-themed concert last night, which was fun. He plays the trumpet. My 10-year-old is playing the violin. Sam takes ceramics and engineering, which I think is another way for kids to be creative. I think that there's incredible opportunities, and Tacoma Creates is going to give us an opportunity to get away from, at times, I worry that we're means testing who gets access to cultural arts when really, all kids in Tacoma deserve equal access to the arts. And I'm confident that Tacoma Creates is going to be the beginning of a very important opportunity for kids and families in Tacoma. So, I thank the organizers for bringing this forward, and I appreciate the opportunity for us to take formal action as a board.
Any other comments, Director Leon?
Yes, I think it's also going to be extremely important for the education piece of advancing math, science skills, to have them coordinated with arts, because the arts have been shown to, from music, from being able to understand notes and patterns, to being able to draw helps you with all the other considered hard subjects and succeed in life, so, exciting.
I'm excited about this, too. I think Tacoma has a really interesting, creative community, given the size of our city and where we are. It's just really neat. I think one of the reasons why, this is my assumption, something like this has gotten so much attention and I think support from where I sit or the places I've heard people talking about it, is because people in our community have had the opportunity to see the benefits of the arts. Like, there's so many murals around town, there's so many pieces of art done by local Tacoma residents, young people, too, like the installation in the basketball court, THA's property downtown. Like, that's all our homegrown Tacoma residents, the products of their art. So, I'm excited about this to continue that creativity in another generation of Tacoma students. So, thanks to everyone who brought it forward. So, all those, it's been moved and seconded, correct? Yeah. All those in favor of adopting item 13.3 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item, item 14, report to the board. 14.1, Biannual Report, Urban Collaborative.
So, we have John Bell and Steve Mondragon that are going to give us the Urban Collaborative Biannual Report today.
Just as Mr. Bell and Mr. Mondragon are transitioning up, for those, as we've heard tonight, we are making reductions in several areas. For those that are home and in the staff, Mr. Mondragon will be leading our elementary focus, focus of special education, and Mr. Bell will be working in collaboration focusing in on the secondary aspects. So, Student Support Services has things that, many things that work on a continuum across the K-12, so they will truly be working in collaboration, but they will be our new points of lead as we move forward in elementary and secondary special education services.
Good evening, Director Cobb and board members, staff. My name's John Bell. I'm Director of Student Services with the Secondary.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Mondragon, Elementary Director.
Our goal tonight is to continue the Process of Reporting project that's been going on for, this is our seventh year now. Since 2012-13, we've been working through goals that resulted from urban collaborative reports and recommendations, and so, we want to continue by providing some detailed data that will help you to understand who we are and who we're serving, and then, in addition, some of the work that we're doing moving forward. The Timelines at a Glance is a document that has been a part of this process, and the quote I would highlight is that we've put in it the last few presentations suggesting, stand back as if it's 10 years from now and look at what we've done. From that perspective, I'm excited to talk about some of the things that are happening for the students with disabilities in our district. I want to skip a slide to go to the enrollment slide as the next data part that I would highlight. If you'll see that the 1718 data shows an annualized enrollment of 3,884 students. Off to the right in the gray section there, you can see down below that the May count for special education was 4,398. That number includes students in preschool classrooms, and so, represents 15% of the district's population that we're serving and supporting through our programs. So, going backwards then to talk about what our students look like by eligibility category, the disabilities that are represented, you see that specific learning disability, the mild to moderate categories, represents just over a third of our population. And then, you see some of the other categories that have larger percentages, including health impairment, developmental, and then, communication and autism areas of need. We've got diverse student needs, and certainly, that requires diverse student responses. Our students by the LRE category, the least restrictive environment, our objective is to educate our students to the greatest extent appropriate for all students in the least restrictive environment. So, that 80 to 100% category represents 58% of our students with disabilities currently. 14% are represented by that 0 to 39%. So, that those numbers, what those mean, the 80 to 100% are mostly in general education classes and are receiving the least amount of pull-out or self-contained support. And our 0 to 39% category represents those students who are receiving the most intensive supports within our buildings. Our students with disabilities by race generally reflect the same demographics that you would see district-wide. Our students with color still have disproportionate representation, and we continue to work on the equity part of our process, and that is an important piece of being accurate about serving the students who have those needs.
Thank you. So, I'd like to highlight a few of our action steps as we move forward with this to work. And really, a lot of these action steps are focused on around professional development. So, in this slide, speak to the third, the first and the third items there. So, within our Student Services Department, we have instructional facilitators, behavior specialists, and teachers on special assignments. And we recognize that we have, our work is really based in three buckets of instruction, behavior, and compliance. And this year, we're having our staff divide into work groups where we're going deeper into the work of behavior, instruction, and compliance, as well as, at the same time, also seeing the interconnected, interconnectedness of these, of these three items as well. And it supports our staff because, to the first item there, being professional learning networks, because our staff facilitate those professional learning networks, which are provided to our special ed staff in district, our resource teachers, and our self-contained teachers. So, want to promote new learning and grow their capacity. The instruction focus, I'd like to highlight, we're piggybacking on the work, on the very diligent work of curriculum and instruction around standards. So, we are really focusing on standards-based IEPs and working with our staff to look at standards, see the vertical alignment of standards, look at misconceptions, prerequisite skills of standards, and grow our staff's capacity around standards-based instruction. For behavior, want to highlight our work around functional behavioral assessments and behavior improvement plans. So, our behavior team is really working on. behavior improvement plans, so our behavior team is really working on providing toolkits and support for our staff with regards to thinking about the function of a student's behavior, and what are they trying to get out of that behavior, as well as creating behavior improvement plans that are reteaching appropriate behaviors and growing the student's capacity as well. And for the next step, something that we're really excited with is the last, last item there being partnering with our DART team, and really focusing on how can we look at data from both the building perspective down to the individual students' needs, so we're better able to meet those needs and also support our staff. And for future reporting, in April two thousand nineteen, we will have our next report will be posted, and we'll be providing updates.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the board? Director Hines?
Thank you for the report. I was encouraged looking at the, well, now let me see where it went. You got me distracted because I clicked on the link that took me to the collaborative page, but it's just spinning, so now I gotta try to get myself back to where I was.
I'll look at this one.
I'm there, thank you. I was encouraged in the appendix to see that in two thousand and five, we had fifty-seven percent of the students were attending neighborhood schools, and that in, or two thousand and twelve, pardon me, and that in two thousand and fifteen, we were at eighty-eight and a half percent, I think that is consistent with the vision of this board that students need to be able to stay in their neighborhood with their friends and still receive whatever instruction they need in order to be successful, so I appreciate that trend, I think we're headed in the positive direction. And that inclusion model, I'm reminded, it's been at least two years now, but the young man from Lincoln High School that took an AP Biology class, and his value of self-worth, and he earned a B in the class, so his ability to go in and perform academically in what it taught himself, what it taught his classmates, and I think that this inclusion model is so important because it starts to break down stereotypes and assumptions, and it really values kids that may need special education. Director Cobb and I had coffee yesterday, and one of the things I was sharing with her is, I think every kid should have an IEP. I think this notion that, oh, well, you're special, and so you're going to get an IEP, all kids need to have a plan. What is the plan for you to be successful academically, what are the interventions that you need? I would be interested in future reports to better understand what this is getting us in terms of achievement, so increased academic achievement, what is it getting us in terms of discipline rates, are we seeing reduced discipline rates, attendance, we know attendance for all of our students is incredibly important, what do the attendance numbers look like for our special education students as ways to bridge barriers and close gaps, because ultimately, we want kids to feel included because we want them to achieve at the same rate, that's the goal, we always want them, we want to create that expectation, and then we want to provide the plans and the supports necessary to get them there. So that information, I think, is incredibly important if we're going to be able to provide a comprehensive assessment of the success, I think the system and the support, we're on track. Now, let's see how we're doing against those other metrics, and any other metrics that have to do with achievement and student success that you believe are relevant to the work that you're doing. And thank you for the report.
Director Leon?
Yeah, in that same slide, I think you were referring to, you had an improvement in the percent of kids in the general education classes, and in the bottom graph, it looks like there was a slight decrease from two thousand twelve to fifteen from the graduation rate, students with IEP. What do you think is the reason for that, is that it's not a large percentage drop, within statistical error rate, or?
Ideally, we're, well, it's not ideal, it's, it's flat over the last couple of years and within a fraction of a percent, and so certainly to continue to work on improving the students' access to the general ed curriculum, and continuing to improve the alignment of our IEPs to the standards that those students are having to meet in order to reach graduation standards, we anticipate a jump and growth in, in rates across the board for all of our schools.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a couple comments. First, on slide two, I appreciate the inclusion of the safety benchmark, or the safety goal, I think in the last time we had a presentation, it wasn't there, so it's good to see it there, arrayed with the others. I might be remembering that wrong, but I don't think so, I think it, safety wasn't included, so I appreciate that addition. And I also appreciate the addition of the various disability types, and that breakdown here too, that was something that came up in the last presentation, so I appreciate you all taking that note, because I think it does help provide some context to the conversations that we're having about the inclusion rates, and I think in a past presentation, we were talking about outcomes related to AP course-taking and some of those pieces, so I appreciate this additional context. I did have a question about the, the behavior-focused professional learning opportunities, and I wondered who the target of those opportunities are, is it both special education teachers and our general ed teachers, or who's engaging around these opportunities?
Yeah, so these, so primarily, it is for our sped staff, we do have a couple buildings that we do go into, and we provide, facilitate professional development to buildings as well, if that need is, is needed.
I guess I'm just wondering, that's good, helpful to know, and I'm just thinking about understanding the functions of behavior like you talked about, and some of that training, translating for some of our general ed teachers who haven't had opportunities to learn how to engage with the information that you get from a functional behavioral assessment, I think that's probably a training opportunities that others would benefit from, and I know that there's some master plan rollout for all this, I'm sure, but I just raise it as a question, knowing that it's not always instruction that you get in a general ed prep program, but thinking that it's probably beneficial, given our, while you're nodding, I'll stop talking. But I appreciate the breakdown and your focus on instruction, behavior, and just where you're going with the next step, so thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Nope, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So item number fifteen, individual board comments or reports. Start with Director Hines.
You threw me, I thought you were going to go to the end and work your way back.
I started with you all night, so I had.
Well, I, I've had a lot to inquire about tonight, we've had a lot of good information. Well, I want to start with a couple of acknowledgements of public comments, so first with the custodians, and I appreciate that we were able to get to yes with the custodians. My father-in-law was a custodian in the Spokane School District for over twenty years, and, and I know that I and my family feel a special connection when, when we're at schools and we are, and we see the custodians, because we know the important role that they play, and we know through the eyes of Papa what that work meant to him, so I was pleased that we were able to, to get there in a respectful way, and to get to yes on an agreement, and similarly with the nutrition service workers, and I'm excited because I know we talked about growth opportunities, and I think that there's a whole lot of ways that we could use our nutrition service workers, I'm a big proponent of scratch kitchens, and with all these beautiful schools we're building, they have phenomenal kitchen facilities, so that coupled with all of the gardens that we have on school property, and I think Tacoma continues to be the leader in gardens per capita in the country, and we know we definitely have hungry kids and families in the community, I think there's a number of ways that we can continue to leverage those nutrition service workers to help provide nutritious and tasty meals for our kids and families. And then, lastly, while it was not directly related to the school board, I had the opportunity on Saturday night to attend the Tacoma Historical Society Destiny Dinner, and I was reminded of what a great partnership we have with the Historical Society and the district, and the resources that come to our kids to understand what Tacoma has been about, and where Tacoma could head in the future, and I think that that connection is so important, we want to know our roots, we want to know our ancestry, but we also want our future generations to be empowered to, to move Tacoma in a direction that makes sense to them, and I look forward, I know that they have been producing books for us on a, I think on an annual basis, and I look forward to the next volume, because I think it's just an invaluable way for our kids to feel connected to the past.
Thank you. Director Leon?
So I did, recently visited Tacoma High School, I just wanted to make a few comments about some of the classes I visited there and some of the people I met, principal, Mr. McCollgan gave me an excellent tour, and I got to sit in on some of the classes, several teachers, so I was able to visit the ninth grade biology class with Ms. Tam Ferrera, I may be mispronouncing that a little bit, they recently had taken eighty-four students to UPS for a conference that weekend before, so those kids were very involved in a photosynthesis laboratory when I was in there, so it was exciting, I was a biology major, so I get excited about photosynthesis too easily, probably. There was, I also found out about the deaf program, teaching to deaf students there, I was very impressed with that, and it sounds like there's a regional center there, so we take, they take students from outside of the Tacoma Public Schools, Peninsula students go there. There was excellent, it looks like there was excellent collaboration between teachers that I saw, there was, I've got science in the high school going in there, classes of, multiple science classes, but that was one of them that was there. Sat in on Mr. Chambers, Sanger Chambers, AP Bio class, they were working on what causes beads to, water to bead up on your cars, with some physics, they were incorporating lots of not just biology, but physics and math, and I was excited to see them working on that. We talked a lot about AP testing and things like that, so I won't give you all that information, but it sounds like they're, they're doing pretty well there, final pass rates are in eighty-six percent, or I think eighty-six percent is what, that's what I was told, seemed pretty, pretty impressive to me. There was a special ed class of math with Natasha Richardson, so got to see what the ratio looked like there, about twelve students per teacher, excuse me, I might turn my phone off. So it was a good view of the school, got to find out there, you know, we've got some college recruiters going there and going to all the schools, it's important that they're going, Western Washington University was just there, and PLU was just there. They're, talked about internships that they have, and they're, that they have their, the mobile computers are called COWs, is that the right term? Okay, so they've got.
Computers on wheels.
Computers on wheels, okay. So they've got some funding for that, but it's always temporary funding is what I understand, so they have to reapply for that, but they've been happy with their, their performance on that. So, and we've got one of our reps from Mount T, right, so, we've got representation from them, so, great visit there, looks like some good things happened at Mount Tacoma. I also, in my other role, I am this team physician for Lincoln Stadium High School, so I go to all those games, or the ones I can, at night, I can't make them all, sometimes in split, split games, I take my residents with me, and I've had, the past couple of years, extraordinary, larger, larger number of students, I'm trying to bring in the athletes and the trainers over there to help examine patients with me, and I've had a lot of interested people in, in careers in medicine, so it's been exciting to get more of them involved and get some of them included in some mentoring work I do, so.
Well, I just have one comment to share, if you were not at the East Side Community Center grand opening, you missed a party. It was just great to be out there for the grand opening and see so many people, I think it was something like a couple thousand people showed up throughout the day, we started with the parade and was out there, it was great to reconnect with former Director Eschka because she put so much energy into shepherding some of that work along, so we marched through Salishan, family members, people were out on their porches or looking through the window, waving, and of course, our mayor showed up on a Lime scooter, Congressman Heck, so it was just fun to get the Lincoln Band out there, so many members of the community, and all the folks who had a hand in moving that effort forward all back together. It was, it's just going to be a great facility for the community on the east side, and it was long overdue, and it immediately is, I think, going to fill a void, and the pool is fabulous, it's, the fitness center is going to be a great opportunity for folks to be active and get healthy, it's just going to be great, I'll just say, great, 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 and if you missed it, you missed the party. So that's my main update, the thing that sticks with me the most from the last week. Do we have a report from our board, student board member?
Yeah, I just had a couple questions after listening to the public comments. First, I just wanted to know the difference between IEP and a para, are the, like, are the paras the IEPs?
An IEP stands for Individual Education Plan, and so it is a plan for a student to reach their academic success based on their disabilities, and a para is a, a para educator is a specific staff member that works in a various settings, and we have a number of para educators that work in special education, as well as other settings.
So do the paras get, like, more than one student to, like, help out and teach and stuff like that?
Yes, based on the various factors, para educators could be working in a one-to-one situation, or they could be working in small group or large group settings and assigned to classes, or even multiple classrooms, and then sometimes there are other duties where they would be assigned to large groups.
And those classrooms are specifically for special education students, so just them in the classroom with the para, not unlike other classrooms, because some students from special ed do get to go to, like, regular classes, correct?
Yes.
And that works by, like, so their para isn't with them when they're in those other classrooms?
There may be situations where the para educator goes into those other classrooms to provide the support there as well, but it should be noted that para educators are not only for special education.
Oh, okay, okay.
Good questions. You have other comments, questions, how does the school year gotten started? Can you give us that update? How's school?
It's good.
Well, we always appreciate you being here and hearing your comments and questions and your perspective, because it's good reality check for us, so it's great to see you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from members of the board?
Well, I'd just add with your east side that that was made possible, that good partnership between the district and Metro Parks, so that, that property that the East Side Community Center is built on, on the First Creek Campus, was a part of the, the trade of property that allowed us to build the Environmental Learning Center that houses Samy and Point Defiance Park, and just couldn't, neither of us could have done it on our own, and out of it came two amazing facilities to benefit kids and families in Tacoma, it's pretty awesome.
You just reminded me of the time I spent last night at the Environmental Learning Center, we have a student who's participating in the Junior Guides Program, so I got to see, I saw it too, for the grand opening, and it's nice to see buildings when they're all broken in, so it's great to be back there. Director Leon?
Yeah, just, well, one more comment on the East Side Center you mentioned, so that's where my old practice was right down the road from that, so I've got many patients that will benefit from that, and some that I still have to take care of today, and five or six of them in the past month have been telling me how excited they are for that center to open and help them with their, with their health and their mental health, so very exciting for them.
Hearing no other comments, or seeing none. Number sixteen, announcement of future board meetings, Thursday, November eighth, we'll meet at six PM for our regular business meeting. Monday, no, that is Monday, November nineteenth, twenty eighteen, we'll meet at six PM for our regular business meeting, and there's no meeting on eleven fifteen because members of the board will be, some of the members of the board will be attending the WAZDA annual conference.
And being recognized as a board of distinction.
Thanks, Dr. Garcia. And just for the record, it's not spelled out here, but WAZDA is the Washington State School Directors Association, so WAZDA is our membership organization. And then we will also meet on Thursday, December thirteenth, twenty eighteen, at six PM for our regular business meeting. Item seventeen, executive session, we do not have an executive session tonight, and with that, we'll move on to item eighteen, we are adjourned.
What did you say the name of the meeting?
November nineteenth?
Yeah, that's the Monday.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure that we have.
Correct?
Uh huh.